So, all set and back? All right. So, let's call the June 28, 2017 Heinsburg Planning Commission meeting to order. First order of business not on the agenda. I'd like to welcome Marie Gardner, our newest member. Thank you for volunteering, Marie. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
All right, we'll move on to agenda changes. I don't know of any agenda changes. Anybody else know of agenda changes? Okay. Move on to item number two, public comment for non-agenda items. Unfortunately, nobody in the audience tonight, so we'll very quickly move on to Village Growth Area Development Density Review, item number three.
So, at the last meeting, we talked about several of the issue areas related to the Village Growth rezoning effort that you had already talked about and are waiting for additional feedback from the public and/or language from me on. And we talked about what's left to discuss. And density and phasing was one item. The Village Northeast District as a whole, that was another. John had mentioned Lot 15 in Commerce Park. So, so tonight, I just want to introduce the development density conversation and get a read on what about it you all are thinking in terms of what needs to be fixed, what's the problem, is there a problem, that sort of thing. And I'll give you some information, and then I thought at the next meeting, we could flesh it out a bit more. So, I'll keep it brief, because we also have on agenda item number four, some actual regulatory language under the, for the housekeeping changes for zoning to look at. So, density. It's a, it's a, it's a word that planners like to use, that the public is both scared of and doesn't understand. But it's hard, there isn't a good substitute for it. Concentration of development, amount of development. Basically, in a nutshell, density is how many dwelling units per acre you're allowed to build. So, it could be discussed in terms of either residential or non-residential development density. So, non-residential could mean commercial development, industrial development, municipal, what have you. But in Heinsburg and in most communities, actual units per acre density relates solely to residential, with, with non-residential development governed by not a, a single number like a density number. Typically, non-residential development is governed by lot coverage, how much of a lot you can cover with parking lot buildings and the like. It's governed by building height, how tall a building you can build. It's governed by site plan review standards that might be specific to the use, namely, how many parking spaces are you going to need, what does the traffic flow look like, that sort of thing. So typically, when we talk about density, the, the numbers that we bat, that we banter about are residential density. And so currently, our zoning regulations define that in the Village Growth Area, and that's what I think we're, we're, you were interested in talking about. But before we talk about what those numbers are, just, I imagine most of you know, but it'd be good to refresh everyone. Why is density important as a concept? Why do we even talk about it? Well, the most basic reason, of course, is that it sets an upper limit on how much, how much residential development can happen, so that we're not overwhelming our schools or overwhelming our transportation system, our water and wastewater system, all those sorts of things. But it's, it's important for a lot of other positive reasons, which have to do with creating the type of community that residents are interested in seeing. And so, in the Village Growth Area, we talk a lot about pedestrian-focused development. We talk a lot about public transit and people being able to make, do a variety of their living, both work, sleep, recreation in the same place. And we also talk about concentrating growth in order to keep our taxes down, because if we were running water lines and sewer lines out to Baldwin Road or up the hill roads, and we were providing sidewalks and other infrastructure in those places, the cost to the town would be substantial. So, density plays into that, because the way that we achieve those sorts of smart growth aims is to define and allow for higher density, higher residential development in the village than we do in the outskirts. So, the state is very much online with that philosophy and has been pushing municipalities in that direction for decades. It's written in the state statute that we're, you know, we're supposed to plan in that manner. And as a result, in order to get certain designations that help us realize our vision, so Village Center designation is one, there are four or five that the state offers, Growth Center designation is another, Neighborhood designation. Those designations, for the most part, require communities to be planning for a certain minimum development density in their village and downtowns. So, for a community to say, hey, we think that's a great idea, but we really only want to see a house on every acre, they can't get those designations, because the state says, well, that's not, that's not smart growth. You need to plan for more than a house on an acre in your, in your designated growth areas. So, in addition to achieving our aims, leveraging state resources and, and state designations is, is a function of making sure we have the right density set, and at least a minimum amount of, of residential density allowed. What else is density important for? It really is just a, a measure of how much you're packing into a given space. It's not about design, it's not about a lot of the features that I think community members are most interested in. So, when we do get to design standards, which is one of the other to-do issue areas in the Village Growth rezoning, I think those issues are, are much more tangible to people, both yourselves and, and, and community members. Density is not really about that, but it, it's a, it's a necessary piece. It's a, it's a, it's a quantitative piece that helps, helps us, helps us move in our, in our direction that we want to go. So, with that, all that general information or general perspective, right now, in the Village Growth Area, we have three different densities set. And I don't expect you to, to read this right now, but, but take one and pass it around for next time, so you can digest. Rolf asked me to summarize, or just pull excerpts from, from our regulations on density. I realized that I already did that in February, so before your February 22 meeting, you received a document that did that. But in that document, there was one important section that I said, ah, it's just too long to excerpt, just read it in the zoning. So, this document is just about density, and I did excerpt that rather long section as well. So anyways, just take it for reference and, and read it ahead of the next meeting. The three densities that we plan, that we currently allow in the, in the zoning, in the Village Growth Area zoning districts are four units per acre in the Village Core, so where you're sitting now, essentially, this part of the, the village; three units per acre in the, the Village Northwest and the Village Northeast districts, north of the Village Core; and two units per acre in the two purely residential districts that are on, one is on Mechanicsville Road, Residential 1, and one is at the south end of town near Buck Hill Road intersection, that's Residential 2. So those are the three density, base density allowances. One thing that you need to remember or be clear about is that when this zoning scheme was set up in 2009, that's when it was substantially revised in 2009, that's when we basically doubled the size of the Village Growth Area in terms of places zoned for higher density mixed use. When we did that, we decided that we would try something that not a lot of other towns have tried, and that is to set a lower base density than we actually want to see. So what we're saying is, you can build to this density, two, three, or four units per acre, by right, but we'd really like you to build more, and here, we're going to provide a bonus system that will allow you to literally double that density by doing these public goods, these public goods. And, and we created an à la carte system where you could, you could pick and choose certain public good elements and increase your, your allowed development potential, increase your density in the process. So, the base densities of two, three, and four units per acre can be doubled through the utilization of bonuses that are described in that document that I just handed out. There you go, James. So, Section 2.9 of the zoning in particular lays out the à la carte system. They can also be added to in that doubling system through the provision of affordable housing, and that's also excerpted in that document I just passed out. So, there are a couple of different ways that developments can get to the densities that we actually want to see, but we structured a, a system that they actually have to jump through some additional hoops to get to where we actually want them to go. So, it's a little novel, but, but that is the system that we have in place today. Different communities handle their density allowances differently. Most communities allow for some sort of bonus system to go above and beyond. Not, not, not very many communities have done what we did in 2009, which is to intentionally set the base densities low and tell people, well, we really want you to jump over those and get these higher ones. But the types of bonuses that, that other communities do allow for typically revolve around senior housing, affordable housing, and the provision of public infrastructure, all of which, maybe with the exception of senior housing, are embedded in our bonuses as well. So, let's see, why don't I show you the growth area, so you can visualize it? And, and then I can show you some examples of not what we are planning for, but what we have today in terms of existing development and the densities associated with it. Okay, I'm going to kick the lights off, so you can see the screen a little more as it's sunset, so. Okay, so this is our Village Growth Area. This particular diagram was something that was produced during the Village Visualization Project several years ago, that the Village Steering Committee did. And to give you the bounds, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. CBU is on the northern side of this map, the top of the map in the middle. You can see the Ballard's Corner, Commercial District on the, on the upper left of the colored polygons. And, and then we have the various districts. The district that is highlighted and says Focus Area, which was the focus area for the visualization study, is the Village Northwest District. Opposite in orange is where NRG is located, that's the Village Northeast zoning district. They are distinct, they have different allowed uses, even though the, the development densities are the same. To the south of that, you enter the, the existing Village Core. And so, in green, the largest district in the Growth Area is the Village zoning district, and that's where we're sitting. It's also where the fire station and the neigh, the residential neighborhood behind it are located. This map was done before the Kinney Drugs little pod of development happened, so you're not seeing it on the map in terms of building footprints. That red industrial district, the rather, the rather large one, is the Cheese Plant. And then we have the, the Commercial District along Commerce Street in sort of a pale yellow. And then we have the two purely residential districts, which are part of the Growth Area, but are not designed to be mixed-use districts. They're designed to be, you know, medium-density residential districts. And those are along Mechanicsville Road in the pale or blue, and at the south end of town, the Residential 2 District around the Buck Hill Road 116 intersection. So, when we talk about the growth, the Village Growth Area, this is the area we're talking about.
What's the other little red area there next to, just north of the Cheese Plant? Is that?
That's another industrial district that is centered on the
Giroux.
The Giroux, yep, metal body shop and metal fabrication shop. It's a very small district.
Just on one side of the road?
Yes. Yep. Any other questions to, about orienting ourselves here? This is all in our sewer service area, all in our water service area. Both of those areas are actually a bit larger than the Growth Area, but, but the entire Growth Area is contained within them. So, that's by way of orienting. Let's see, I think, there are a couple other interesting products that came out of the visualization study that I thought we might be interested in. This one is similar and difficult to read, so I can email this to you, so you can take a look at it. What, what the consultant did with, in collaboration with our office and the Village Steering Committee, was to look at specific areas within the Village Growth zoning and determine how many acres there were there, and then based on those den, those base densities and the maximum densities, what the maximum build-out of those areas could be. So I'll just zoom into one, so you can get a sense for it. Let's see here, I'm going to get out of this screen for a moment. So, if we take a look at, oh, that's mostly readable as is, but I'll zoom in a little bit further. If we look at the area behind the police and fire station, Area A, and they've broken it into Area A1, A2, you can see that the, I gotta scroll down a little bit here. The Farmall Drive neighborhood, where all those house lots are indicated, is 18.3 acres. It is in our Village District, so it has the, the highest density allowance, base density allowance of four units per acre. And that equates to the potential for 73 dwelling units, or if bonuses were achieved, 161 dwelling units altogether. That's a, that's a built-out neighborhood. It's not going to get much bigger, if at all. And it has 37 dwelling units in it. So it was built before the Village Growth Area zoning came into existence. In fact, when that neighborhood was built, the Village District actually sort of straddled the northern part of the development, and they had to pull some density in from surrounding land. So, it's an underbuilt neighborhood, in a sense, even though it's one of our denser neighborhoods. And the reason for that is it's all single-family homes, or at least mostly, single-family homes. And you can only achieve so much density when you're building a house on its own plot of land, versus duplexes or multifamily buildings or a mix of those.
So what is the actual density there?
So, I think I have it in another slide. It's, it's 37 units, so if we
About two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I will say
What are the lot sizes roughly?
So I will say that there's a difference between overall density on a particular project and apparent or real density.
Sure.
This, this property, as many of you know, has a large stormwater pond, where the, the leader line is pointing to Area A2, that little dot. And then the lot to the north of that, that's in the same color, is a large wetland area that the town used to own, and then we, in the last few years, sold it back to the neighborhood. And that's not really buildable land. If you were to exclude those areas, the apparent density is, is quite a bit higher. I've got another slide that will show you that comparison.
What are the residential lot sizes that
Oh, right, sorry. 6,000 square feet, for the most part.
So they met what our minimum lot size was
Yeah, in fact, when, when we
At the time, 6,000.
This project was done before this zoning came into effect. It was actually this project that helped guide the, the selection of the 6,000 square foot minimum lot size.
Right, so if you think about that, it's about
Seven years, that's an
Seven per acre.
Yeah. If you just dealt with that.
Right. And the way, the way these things are written, if you apply it to Village Northwest, the base is three, you can multiply by a factor of 1.2, seven per acre.
It's close, yeah.
Yeah.
And in the, in the Village Core, the base density is four units per acre. If you maxed it out at 8.8 units per acre, it's close to that as well.
The area that doesn't show smaller lots to the left of A2, there actually are some structures there that are duplexes, I believe?
Yes, so there are some duplexes.
That are on individual lots, or are they
No, they, they are
All on that big lot?
Located in that one large lot, right here. So there are eight of them, I think.
So, do those, the people who live there, all of them owned that lot?
Yes, it's a, it's a condominium association within a larger neighborhood association.
Okay.
Yep.
Alex, there's kind of a triangle of, narrow triangle of property between the rows of houses, is that common land?
Common land, yep, it's open green space that the folks who live around it sort of use as extended yard, but it's, it's in common.
And there's access to that, it looks like, between a couple of lots.
Right.
There's a little handle that comes down to where the road
Yes, so
The street is.
So, the two common areas are this sort of small slipper with access out to the road, and then this larger area here is common green space with access
With access
And access to the end of the road here.
Common wet space, I think.
Well, yes, it's had some, it's had some wetness issues. So, these are two common green areas. This was donated to the town, actually, and that's just green space at the moment, and that's where we want to do our town green eventually. And then this is the wetland area that's just open and not buildable, and this is the stormwater pond. And then you have the roads, of course. Anyways, this, this was just an example that the, the visualization study did to take a look at some of these areas and see what their, what their potential was for build-out. Let's see here, this is the last one I will show you from the visualization study. So, this is the focus area, this is the Village Northwest District that the, the visualization study honed in on. And they, a part of the study was to show what could actually be built based on the zoning that had been adopted in 2009. And so, it, it, it did two things. It, it looked for what might be a reasonable pattern of development, and then it sought to maximize that development in a, in a way that was, that, that the current market could potentially support. So, it wasn't just a hypothetical exercise, although, although we didn't actually have a developer that we were working with at the time, but, but there, it was informed by actual development patterns. And Mike Bouger, who's on the Village Steering Committee and did the, the lion's share of this work, works for a lot of different developers and had a pretty good sense. So, what they did was take this focus area, create a sort of development plan, and then drill down into what are the resulting, what would the resulting densities be, what could some of the house types look like? You know, how, how could it actually look? As the title of the project indicates, the purpose was to provide some visualization tools for the community to see, you know, what might happen if somebody built it out to the max. So, in this particular scenario, you've got almost 300 units of development, of residential development, almost 100,000 square feet of non-residential space, and they've got the, the density broken down here. I will get out of this, so I can zoom in again, into the component areas. So, they have a small slice of residential on the northern side called Area G, with, in their plan, 18 units, and, which amounts to 16 units per acre. Moving south from that, they, they just sort of chunk the, the development plan into different areas based on the type of units. And you can see varying sorts of development density rolling out from that, from two units per acre and on the western edge, Area F, to five units per acre and Area D, and so on and so forth. The way that you get the greater densities, as you can see from the blue area down at the bottom here, Area C, is with multi-story, multifamily buildings. It's very difficult to achieve densities that we actually call for in our zoning, which are the maximum densities, which for this area would be six units or six and a half units per acre. Very difficult to achieve those densities with single-family homes. But, much easier to achieve them with multifamily units. And the blend of a development that does a little of both can, you know, accomplish that in different areas. So, just some examples of some of the planning we've done in the past on density and how you get there. Here are some examples of what we actually have today. So, this is the neighborhood that we were looking at earlier. This is the neighborhood on Farmall Drive behind the police and fire station. And on the bottom, you can see what the overall is. It's, it has a slightly different acreage from what the Village Visualization Study indicated, just a matter of incorporating road right-of-ways, I think. In any case, about 20 acres overall, 37 units for an overall density of just 1.8 units per acre. But, when you exclude these, these areas that, that visually don't feel like they're part of the development, when you're walking the streets, you're not, you're looking at the houses and, and how many of those are stacked up along the street, the apparent density when you exclude those areas is closer to four units per acre. Just because the, the lots, or the overall project size would be smaller with those areas excluded. Here's Lyman Meadows. So this is a project that's been in town for a good long time, since the 90s. And again, it's a, it's a project that originally included Lyman Park, and that was given over to the town. So, in terms of its overall area, it's, it's a, it was a fairly large parcel, but when you think of it today, nobody thinks of Lyman Park necessarily being part of Lyman Meadows. And so, there's a difference between what, what the density was when it was approved versus the apparent density when you're a pedestrian walking through the project and experiencing the buildings and the streetscape and that sort of thing. But, you can see that the density levels are pretty high. Again, these are multifamily units, so you can, you can achieve density with those much easier than single-family. And the overall density was 5.2 units per acre, and the apparent density is closer to eight and a half. This is the main street section of Route 116, at least the western side of it. And so it includes a variety of both single-family homes, multifamily dwellings, and, trying to think if there's any commercial left on that side. I guess there is on the, the, the building where Twice as Nice is located, but that's really about it. So in any case, if you take the area of that, it's about 3.6 acres. There are 23 dwelling units, or at least there were when I did this quite some time ago, excluding Green Street in the back. And you get a density of about six units per acre. And I forget what the last, oh, right, so, I don't know if, how many of you are familiar with this neighborhood, it's off of Mechanicsville Road, so as you're going pa, if you're going up Mechanicsville Road, past the post office on your right, the next road is Hawk Lane, and not a whole lot of reason to drive down it, doesn't, it's a dead-end road, as you can see on the map in the lower left. This is a, this is an old development, and it's single-family homes on fairly large lots. And so, we get an overall density of the 13 acres of just .7 units per acre. A real example of A real example of not what you want to do in a, in a growth area.
There is one duplex in there though.
Very rapidly eat up your property. One duplex in that. So these are just examples, these I actually did years ago. These are just examples to show that we have varying amounts of residential density in the growth area. We have places like this on Hawk Lane that are very low. We have places like this that I'm not sure a lot of people think about as having as many dwelling units as they actually are along that section of one sixteen. Pretty high density, but in a historic sort of streetscape and in, in historic buildings. As well as the more modern examples of, of pretty significant density in Lyman Meadows and variable in, in along Farmall Drive.
So how does Green Street compare with any of these?
Good question.
How does which street?
Green Street. So Green Street is another good example of a property that, whose apparent density to the, to the person walking down the street is very different from the overall density when you look at the, the parcel size that was part of the project. There are twenty-six dwelling units in the development today. It's, there are two residential lots that have not been built on for single-family homes. So really, you could think of it as being a twenty-eight. And, but that's just along Green Street. The, the apartment house on Route one sixteen at the Silver Street intersection was a rid, was part of that project, was part of the parcel. It was the one existing building. So if you add that, there are five units in that building. It pushes us up to thirty-three units. But it's, I haven't run the numbers. I'd have to look at the parcel sizes, Barbara, and I could email that to you folks because it's a little hard to do off the top of my head. But all of that wet meadow from, from where the new building is down to the La Platte River was part of the, part of the parcel, part of the project. And so its overall density is actually quite low. But when you subtract that out and just look at where the developed area is and calculate the density on that, it's, it's quite high. Again, because they're multifamily units, so there's, there's quite a lot of units packed into a small space. And I don't, I don't have the numbers at my fingertips.
So I have a question. So looking at the first page of this handout that you've done, the, you know, the base densities. What, what densities are, are we looking at? If the density bonuses are, are factored in?
Double.
Double?
Yeah.
That's the max?
Hundred and twenty percent, to be precise. So it's a little more than double. So four would go to eight point eight, three would go to six point six, two would go to four point four.
And you said it before, what was the rationale, you guys, as far as the scope and nature of the density bonuses? We're incentivizing what?
Well, so, so we incentivize a number of things. Affordable housing?
Yeah.
Energy and community amenities, right? You know, you can argue the balance that we put on each of them. But as Alex said, you know, we, we intentionally set the base density low.
Yeah.
Right? And we set the bonuses looking at, you know, how other developments effectively looked in this area, number one. So that was a reason. So, you know, if the effective density of a Lyman Meadows or a village streetscape kind of played into that. If this is going to be an extension of the village, you'd want it village-level densities. The other thing that was considered, thinking back on this, is this is cast as a mixed-use area, which implies that not only are you increasing your residential capacity, right, you're increasing services. The two go together, right? If you have very low densities, you're not going to hope to get services, right, to enhance the village area. To make this more a place that, you know, people would like to live.
Services, in other words, commercial?
Commercial, I mean shops, restaurants, professional businesses, you know. Everything from the accountant to the doctor to the, you know, whatever. You know, it's a symbiotic relationship.
Was there consideration in any of that or about the actual size of the house?
Well, I mean.
They keep saying that.
So I, so I think, I think you, you can see, if you read the section, there's actually incentivization for smaller houses as part of, as part of the affordable, you know, notion. Smaller places are more affordable than larger places, I guess.
If you take a look at the handout that I, that I just handed out to you tonight, it's about three pages in or so, Section two point nine point two.
That's, that's really the only way somebody's density is looked to is you have smaller places.
If you can find that, that page, it lists the four ways that you can, that you can garner bonuses. And they are dwelling unit size. So just like Joe said, you can get a bonus if your units are smaller than the average. When we wrote these regs, the average new home was about two thousand or twenty-one hundred square feet. So with that in mind, we set the numbers for smaller, single-family homes and multifamily units in the hopes that we could incentivize people to build smaller. Green Home Certification was the second way. The use of renewable energy technology was the third way. The provision of important public spaces and infrastructure was the fourth way. And then the fifth way that's not in Section two point nine, but it's the beginning of two nine, tells you to go look there, is the affordable housing component, which is contained in our Inclusionary Zoning regs. And that's discussed on the first page of this handout I, I gave you. So there's really five ways to do it. Dwelling unit size, green home certification, renewable energy, important public infrastructure, and affordable housing. Those are the five ways to get bonuses.
But the percentage that you get depends on how many incentives you've
Exactly.
added to your project. And it doesn't weight the individual incentives. The first one, one, you can pick any one of those. So you're not going to change dwelling unit size by, by this table. You would have to somehow highlight dwelling unit size as being more valuable than the others if, if you wanted to do that, for example.
It's a complicated section, and I'll be honest with you. Everyone who's looked at it has been confused by it on the developer's side of the coin. So probably could use some simplification. But to, to clarify, it does treat each of these bonuses differently. So there are two tables on the page that you're looking at. The, the table at the top of the page says, if you achieve this many incentive points, incentive number, this is the percentage bonus you get, and it varies by district, right? So that's what you're seeing at the top. But then you have to, you have to say, okay, well, how do I get those incentive points or incentive numbers? And the table in the middle of the page tells you how to do that with regard to three of the four bonus types. So it depends on the percentage of the units providing the benefit. And so you can see that dwelling size was given, you get less points for dwelling size than you do for green home certification for the same number of units providing the benefit. So there was sort of calibrated a little bit to, to indicate, at least at the time, what the community thought was the most important thing that we should be incentivizing.
Yeah, I think the other thing to note here is you can max out your bonus without having to hit every one of the incentive sections.
Correct. You could easily pick two and max out your bonus. You could pick dwelling unit size, which is the one that every developer we talked to goes to first because it's easy. You just make your unit smaller. And then pick, pick another one. Do, do more affordable housing than we would normally require, and you can max it out. Or do a green home project and, and get it that way.
Was there a reason, you guys, that the green home, green home certification and renewable energy tech, technology were pulled apart like that?
Yes.
Was there any thought to?
Because at the time, there was a lot of interest in this community in renewable energy technology. Remember, this was being discussed in two thousand seven and eventually got adopted in two thousand nine. So NRG was a, was here and was going great guns. And we didn't have an energy committee yet, but we had a lot of people interested in that. I remember Chuck Reese in particular being at these meetings, you know, saying, we gotta, you know, we gotta get this renewable technology rolled out. And the way to do it is to, you know, give people bonuses to put solar panels up and put, put up trackers and that sort of thing. So I don't want to, I don't want to belittle it too much, but I think renewable energy technology came in here because it was sexy. And it was, it was, it was a topic being discussed quite a lot at, during the day, at that particular time. The green home certification was much more comprehensive. And, you know, that's not just about having a home that uses renewable energy or even just having an energy-efficient home. The green home certification is intended to be sort of like, you're doing everything right. You're, you're sourcing your materials locally. You're reducing your waste. You're building smaller homes. You're super-insulating. You're recycling properly, all that sort of thing. So they were seen as two very different positives or public goods, and that's why they got separated out. I will tell you that no one has taken advantage of the renewable energy technology bonus. And I, I'm not sure anybody ever could. It's just very difficult to, to make that work. Green Home Certification, as some of you know, there was some round and round with the DRB on, we've had one project take advantage of that. It was somewhat controversial as to whether the certification they proposed met the intent of the regs. So that one has some problems. Dwelling unit size by far is the one that developers look to. And I think we got the numbers wrong on the multifamily because twelve hundred square feet is easy. Most, most people building apartments are going to build them at that or less anyway. So we're not actually getting anything different than what the market would produce.
Chuck's project at the south end of the village didn't use the green ho, didn't use the renewable energy technology? Even with the solar panels on the roof?
That was pre.
I think that project was before these, these zoning regs, just like the neighborhood behind the fire station, you know, that was pre all of this.
I mean, the other thing on the energy sections of this, like Alex is right, you gotta, gotta frame this in a, in a two thousand seven mindset. And a lot has changed, right? The state increases their, their minimum requirements. You know, every year, whether you're talking RBs or you're talking LEEDs or talking, you know, whatever. You know, a lot of that's changed. So a lot of what was innovative seven or eight years ago is not as innovative now.
Well, and I think a lot of the, a lot of the emphasis in home construction on the, in, in the way of sort of progressive, green building has shifted away from integrating renewable technology to creating passive or just super-efficient homes such that you don't need much energy input to make them go. Whereas, again, in two thousand seven, it was like, wow, people are, energy puts solar panels on the roof. That's amazing. We should, we should incentivize everyone to do that. And, and just times have changed.
Could we tweak that to family, multi, multifamily units?
I think you should tweak this whole section. Like I said, I think it's, I think it was, it was, it was a valiant effort. It's, it's a little too complicated. And at least two of the bonus opportunities are probably not, not worth keeping or, or at least not in their current form.
Yeah, maybe reworking them, but.
Well, and there may be other, yeah, it may be a way of reworking it from maybe to, to go in the direction that, you know, current building practices are moving in and, and helping incentivize those.
I mean, think about, you know, think about our last meeting and, and, you know, looking at the CCRPC, you know, energy plan. You know, may, maybe, maybe those sorts of things need to take a different, you know, this, this sort of thing needs to take a different direction to kind of incentivize some of those solutions.
Well, and we don't mention senior housing. If there's one thing that over the last ten years, we've realized, you know, we are falling down on is that we're not, we're not building enough housing for the aging demographic. And we have this nice little incentive, incentive carrot approach in the zoning, and it doesn't mention it at all.
But you said nobody's taking advantage of the affordable housing either.
So I will, so two things. We haven't had too many people take advantage of this at all because we adopted this in two thousand nine and we weren't out of the recession in two thousand nine. We were firmly in it. When we came out of it, we had three enormous projects proposed. And it's Heinsberg. We just don't have enough unique developments being proposed and going through the development process to truly prove all these things out and see how, you know, and run them through three projects or four projects and see how they work. So we have limited experience. I will say that in one of those three projects, so the Heinsberg Center Phase Two Project, which is the project behind Kenny Drugs, the developer came in and said, I'm interested in, in following your zoning and trying to get, build more than your base density. I want to get closer to the max or some, you know, somewhere near that. So we said, great. And again, his first comment was, I'm definitely going to do some apartments, so I'm going to hit your unit dwelling size bonus and I'll take advan, I'll probably max out as many points as I can get on that. But to get the number of units that are in my concept plan, I need more. And the first attempt was important public infrastructure. There was a conversation with the DRB and then the Select Board about the developer providing for a portion of the town green behind the police station. And unfortunately, Select Board vetoed that. So that didn't happen. And then the developer did come back at that point and say, I'll do more affordable. Can I get my bonus that way? And, and we said, sure. So that project was supposed to do more affordable than they would have otherwise been required in order to get the necessary bonus. So there are people taking advantage of the affordable bonus. We, we had two examples of people trying to provide the community with an important public space or a piece of infrastructure in order to get a bonus. Dwelling unit size absolutely gets used. And we did have the one example of the green home certification, but I, I think many of us found that to be problematic.
The two-family and the multifamily unit, twelve hundred square foot, that's, that's a total giveaway.
I think so.
As Joe pointed out.
I think so, yeah.
The standard developer builds smaller than that automatically, and we're giving them a bonus for it.
Yep, I think, I think you're right. Well, I think we want to incentivize multifamily. We also want to incentivize small. We don't necessarily want to incentivize, you know, five hundred square foot apartments. There, there's a point at which, you know, we want, we want it to be marketable and we want it to serve the need. But we also want to set the number at a, at a place where they gotta, maybe they're going to stretch a little. Maybe they're gonna work a little differently.
They're building nine hundred and getting a bonus. They're not stretching.
Well, I mean. But the fact that they're building nine hundred at all. Right. And not just doing single-family homes, that is, that's the reason for the bonus.
And that was, that was really, you know, granted, you know, if you look at a small condo, it's nine hundred, thousand square feet. The board's concern at the time, right, was, you know, having, having that piece of land, you know, dominated if not a hundred percent, right, two thousand square foot, single homes.
Right.
Right, and making it look like suburbia.
The fear was Butler Farms. When we zone this, I remember many, many people saying, you're zoning the whole west side of one sixteen. What if it's just going to be one Butler Farms after the other, all single-family homes? That's what the market wanted at the time. Because remember back in two thousand five, two thousand seven, before the crash? It was like, you couldn't, you, everyone wanted McMansions and, you know, two to four thousand square foot homes and. So this was, at the time, John, this was seen as a, as a good idea, but.
It's, from its time.
Yes.
It's like every piece of things, right, is grounded in the date that it was formed.
Right.
I guess I wonder how this could tie in with the mixed use. Was there, any talk about incentivizing more commercial? Was there any talk about incentivizing more commercial or more industrial?
So the second section in two point nine talks about bonuses for non-residential. Um and it does provide for um bonus when you when you have mixed multi-story mixed-use buildings. That's one of the options to get a non-residential density bonus. Uh which means we you do that and we let you build the building higher, maybe put on an extra floor. Or you do that and we allow you to cover more of the lot stuff. Uh those were the kinds of bonuses for non-residential. Um but I'm not sure, I'm not sure any project has taken advantage of these in a in a non-residential commercial way. Uh and we've had a fair amount of commercial development since these regs were uh adopted. So again, I think I think all of section two point nine needs an overhaul. Um and I'm not sure that the non-residential side is, I'm not sure we know the right way to do that. Remember, there are two ways in zoning to get what you want, right? There's the carrot and the stick. So you know, it's I think it's worth thinking through, you know, what kinds of developments have we seen? What is the, what are the market forces today? And where do we need to be more definitive about what needs to happen versus what could happen if somebody wanted to get a bonus? Um so.
Alex, I think it's great, these examples that you showed us as to actually what got built. Uh they are all Heinsberg projects. I would like us to look beyond borders because there's a lot of stuff going on out right now in other towns, not not unlike our town. I'm not talking about downtown Burlington, I'm talking about other similar towns that could be good examples to study.
I and I uh I think that's a good idea.
A list for us.
Yeah, yeah, I ran out of time to put together those examples. I did pull some density numbers from other towns, but not the the actual visuals, which I think would be very helpful. But I will tell you, John, that from what I under- from from my experience with my colleagues, there actually is not a lot of of uh representative village uh dense development going on in communities like Heinsberg. So Richmond has seen very little to nothing. Uh Westford, where I used to live, is very rural, that's seen nothing. Uh Jericho, uh Underhill, I'm not aware of. They've had some commercial projects that have raised people's eyebrows with dollar stores and new grocery stores. Um I think most of that development is happening in places like Shelburne, South Burlington, Williston, Essex, Milton, which are all much larger than we are. But I think tho- those are the places I'm gonna have to go to get you pictures.
And those are the places I think of. That I would say, go look at that project.
So what, that's a really good question. What what do they have that we don't? They have two things, they have um water and sewer I put together as one. No, they also have vastly a vastly greater density allowances. So Milton, for example, um has is just adopting new unified regs where they are going up to twenty units per acre in their in their most central downtown district. Um and play, there are there are other communities like the ones we just mentioned that are that tend to be in either the fifteen dwelling units per acre range or no limit. So the real big communities like South Burlington, Burlington, I think Williston, in their in their core districts, they're they don't have a limit on on residential density. And so it's sort of managed based on other constraints like parking and block coverage, the same way commercial development is. And so that allows projects like Cambria and Rise on North Ave in Burlington where it's it's I forget, does anybody remember the or know the number of units there? It's like um.
Eight hundred.
Seven hundred or, yeah, I I mean, it's just a a amazing amount of development in a tiny little footprint, you know, uh. So so you're right, though, there are two reasons. One is the density allowances, so developers know they can get a return on their investment. And they don't have to argue about it either. So in some places, you need to get bonuses, boards have to be okay with giving you bonuses. Sometimes select boards don't agree with your idea and they don't, they veto things. And then the other thing is sewer and water, yeah.
Yeah, and I I I think in a lot of those places, there isn't as much of a nod to the concept of mixed use either. If I think about, I mean, one that's one that's kind of more in in line with a Heinsberg, but still not what I think we ever intended, if if I think about Severance Corners in Colchester. All right, okay, there's there's a nod to commercial, there's, you know, two or three things up front facing the road there. But then if you look at the the remainder of that property, right, it's all multi-story. There is no single family, there is no, you know, there is no duplex, it's blocks, right?
Yep.
There isn't, there isn't this mix that I think we always had desired, whether we were successful in putting it in language or not.
The uh the Bayberry Apartments on um well, I I call it Patchen Road, but I think it's, I think it has a different name once you fall into Burlington and you come out of South Burlington. But does everybody know where Patchen Road is in in South Burlington? Sort of the the back way to get into Winuski?
Yeah, it's like just over, just over the the humped bridge.
Right. So so as you come into Burlington towards Winuski on Patchen Road, you come down a hill and there there used to be uh or there still is a uh Ireland uh quarry operation there. And and they've taken a portion of the property and are building this Bayberry Apartments development. Um if you haven't seen it, you should drive by sometime, it's it's very colorful. Um but unlike uh Severance Corners, it's all residential, there's no commercial at all cause I think it's owned that way. But it does have a mix of what looked like cottage style, you know, detached dwelling units backed up by large multifamily buildings.
Yeah, it's not the one I was thinking, the one I was thinking of is like the back way to the airport from the Colchester side over the river and.
Oh, on Lime Kiln.
Before you get.
Yeah.
Certainly looking elsewhere is one way to do it, or at least, you know, there's some influence on all on all of this. I think also an obvious place to look is, you know, what I kept hearing round and round, especially with uh the proposals set forward by Blackrock in that Northwest District was, hey, it doesn't look like our town, um or it doesn't feel like our town. Um and I I think if you go to that west side of Main Street, that slide was pretty illustrative. Um you know, below the Charlotte Road. And reckon that that both actual and perceived density is somewhere in the seven to eight units per acre range. Um I mean, I think there's a lesson in that little that little block um for us to take to some of these other districts potentially. You know, you'd ask the question, and I ask it somewhat facetiously, I guess. Are the are are all of these uh density bonus issues um ones that we should keep on the table? You know, I mean, when it comes to energy kinds of issues, I mean, what you've got nationwide and certainly in Vermont are are coming mandates that basically say, hey, um pretty much any kind of residential, not to mention other uses of buildings, need to be completely self-sufficient. That's where we're going.
Right, so why are we, why are we incentivizing that when it's happening anyways?
Why don't we just sort of say, hey, that's the standard period and that's what you gotta do? Especially when the the judgments on these things are so difficult to decipher as to whether they deserve the credit in the first place, you know?
Well, and I will say that from a from a developer's angle, um it would be much easier if the bonuses were by right. So there wasn't a conversation so much about, you know, are you a green home certified project? Are you providing enough, you know, playground space? If it was just do this good thing and you will get this bonus. Uh cause if there's one thing that those folks hate, it's uncertainty and and, you know, most of them walk into a meeting with the black hat on, at least in the community's eye. And so when they're asking for something, it becomes uh difficult. So if there was some way we can structure this to either just flat out require stick or or provide carrots that were guaranteed and not negotiable, I think that would be helpful.
I I I wanna take a little bit of issue with that statement. And and it is, right, if this was so onerous, right, if if they hate the indecision, right, why do we have plans, you know, that have come to the town today that pretty much, you know, build out Village Northwest? And it it can't be so bad, right?
Yeah. I will tell you that um how exactly they were going to achieve these bonuses, uh we hadn't gotten to that step yet. They had indicated that of your à la carte system, we'll probably take advantage of two or three to get to the necessary density. But the proof of them being able to do that was gonna come at the next step, which every, all these projects have are now sort of uh in neutral because of the water situation.
I'm just saying, developers are obviously, right, willing to go through that, right? If they weren't, we'd have no takers.
Yeah, my feeling is that a developer generally will do the le- least they need to do to get the permit. Not the most.
Yeah, I think that's true for all of us, right? I mean, we're we we all take the path of least resistance to get to the the, you know, the end that we're looking for.
Well, I I I do think, though, the stick is uh an appropriate methodology in some of these things. I do think that when it comes to public space infrastructure, say, for example, I don't know what the number is, but one could say that in order to lead a healthy life, um and you live in a community with your family or whoever, um that there's some amount of respite space required, you know? And I think we could make a determination or someone could help in determining that, say, for every unit of housing, there needs to be some specific number of uh space allocated for uh public use. And then it's up to the DRB and maybe some other subjective uh standards to determine not so much the size of that space, but its cohesion and quality and so forth. And probably the same is somewhat true of some of the energy requirements, you know? Hey, look, in two thousand thirty, we're gonna be required to have this, and so you need to do it now, you know? And there's no bonus for it, it's just, I I'm I'm not saying this in absolute terms. I'm just using those two, say, for example, as an example, I guess of um.
I have one other that I that really worries me about is also the non-residential incentive. Because if if it gets all built into residential, which seems to be what builders wanna do right now, I think it's financially more rewarding and we, it all becomes residential. Where do we have room for any businesses that might eventually come along later if they don't come along now? And I don't know about you people, but if I can do anything in Heinsberg, I prefer to do it here and not go anywhere else.
Sure.
Yeah, and that ties back into your mixed use conversations that you had that you had previously and, you know, what defines mixed use. Uh and it may also speak to um whether or not you wanna walk down the road of of um multi-story buildings and whether those should be optional, uh at least some percentage of that. We had that discussion back during the village growth uh zoning back in two thousand seven. And we didn't come to a point where we where the planning commission was comfortable requiring multi-story buildings. But uh I've often thought that without some percentage of buildings being multi-story, it's gonna be very hard to meet the goals or provide for commercial space.
Well, and Alex, you've mentioned affordable housing and senior housing. That those need to be mandatory somewhere.
You'd like to see that as a stick versus a versus an incentive?
You have to do this.
The problem is, you know, we're thinking about these big developments where a developer like Blackrock does have a lot of flexibility to promise or plan for lots of different elements. Um but if you were to break that property down into smaller chunks and those were to come in for review, you know, you can't require every development to be a senior development. There's it's gotta be a blend and it's only because we have these huge master plan projects that that it seems like we should be able to get everything we want. Um so how you write that into regs is is difficult. Um which is where incentives are great because then, you know, you make it very tasty and someone wants to do it. Uh other communities like Williston um will tackle that through the other limiting infrastructure needs. So they have a growth management system and in order to get enough preference points to go to the top of the water and wastewater allocation list, you have you, it helps if you do lots of good things and senior housing is one of those good things and affordable housing is one of those good things. So they, developers tend to sprinkle those into their development and then get, you know, higher preference points.
And we don't have that connection.
We don't yet.
Between our zoning regulations and our water and sewer allocation system.
Not yet, no.
So maybe the planning commission having a broader, larger view starts to make those kind of uh noises and recommendations to the select board to.
Well, before we lost our town administrator, that that was, uh a committee was was created to uh try to think through that uh or some of that anyways, at least how we get to uh how we deal with the next batch of allocation if we can bring one more well online. Uh that project has stalled um due to the lack of a town administrator.
That provides us an opportunity of time.
Yes, well, and a and a vacuum, so if you wanna enter that vacuum and define the define the terms, you can maybe do that a little bit more.
And we did think we had senior housing with Thistle Hill, but then that all fell through. And I believe it was because he couldn't find anybody to partner with at the time.
Exactly.
So it sometimes depends on what the is going on out there in the world of that.
And actually, that's a really good point.
Happened.
Uh to to Barbara's point, when when that happened, so this was this was uh Sterling Construction. They're they're the developer that did Thistle Hill, which is across from the post office. Uh Bart and Colin Frisbee are the principals. Great team, we're we're actively trying to find them another landowner to work with cause we'd like to have them do more in Heinsberg. Um ver- yes, Quinn is one of the ones that we've talked about. Um I think they've also been in discussions with Jan Blumstrom about doing the residential piece of her uh master plan. Anyway, great team, everybody or almost everyone who lives in that Thistle neighborhood has nothing but good things to say about the developer. That's not normal. So uh we we'd love to, we'd love to see them do more work in town.
Could be.
When they, when they came to us and said, we're having trouble figuring out how to make that chunk of the development work, the lower portion of uh of the property, and they talked Cathedral Square, they talked to all the senior housing developers, they they themselves were not a senior housing developer, so they wanted to partner. Um I I I felt like it was unfortunate that we would lose that. But I looked at the reg, he asked the question, can I come back and revise this project? And I looked at the regs and I said, there's nothing preventing you from doing that. I think that, you know, part of what made your project attractive was it had that element and I hate to lose it. But I can't tell you that there's something in the regs that says you you can't ask. And he did, and the DRB said, yeah, that's fine, meet the market, the market is, you know, more few more single family homes. That's kinda helped too, yes. When when the, when when he came back in front of the DRB, many of the neighbors came in and said, we we don't want those big buildings, we don't want all the that density in front of us.
Buildings, probably.
Yeah, I think the building size that they were showing and the building design, I think, was uh not appealing enough.
That, and I think there was a large desire to see the neighborhood be consistent. More of what was already there, so.
Those old folks.
Principally. No, I meant in terms of the development pattern. So it was a single-family home neighborhood and there was a non, you know, there was a multifamily component that was supposed to happen on the front end. And the single-family home neighborhood got built first and those folks said, well, we don't want multifamily, we want more single family.
What a shame, because there's such value in in blended names.
Absolutely, so that's where, I think Barbara's point is where I was saying it's difficult, you know, in some ways. It's good in some ways to have that be a requirement because then, then you can go to a developer and say, no, your project got approved. It is a requirement, either you have to wait and the market will figure it out uh or you need to be more innovative or something, you know? We just didn't, I I wasn't able to make that happen, you know, so we we lost it.
Wasn't there a similar proposal as part of the Creekside Two? Was going to have some elderly or affordable housing in there?
Very early, very early on, they were partnering with uh um uh Champlain Housing Trust.
Housing Trust and.
But the trust decided, they they walked in that case because of the floodplain issues and that's why they ended up at Green Street. They they walked in that case because of the floodplain issues and that's why they ended up at Green Street. Yep, so yeah, there's a lot of vagaries to the whole thing, but. At at the very least, again, this is just an opening salvo, I I think you should think about this, read what the existing regs say, try to understand them if you can. Um I can try to prepare some more information for next time, you can do a little bit of, you know, driving around, looking around at other projects in these other communities if you like. Um and, you know, after your next meeting, maybe we can get some boundaries around what you want changed and how you'd like it to. Go, not that you we have to have it all figured out, but at least you give me direction or me and a subcommittee direction so we can get to work on it.
In in terms of looking at the other communities, I I myself personally would try to find. Projects within these other towns, South Burlington, Shelburne, for example, where the project itself. Has a lot of the qualities that we're trying to create in our regulations and in our town. Not that we would do it the way the larger town with the more. Population density or the more pressure or the more demand for use in their towns, but just the project. This project turned out well, how the developer did it within their regs. It made sense economically for the developer to do. And it's and it's in place, it happened, so use that as an example.
What regs allowed it to happen, yeah, what, yeah.
Bristol has the new one, have you been down to see it?
I haven't got the the co-housing place, I haven't been down to look at it yet.
I think it's very attractive. And that's, I think, different, not just old, just a mix of people, I think. And affordable and not affordable, I think.
And sizes and.
Yeah. It's really nice.
So the the DRB did do a field trip um last week uh to look at some developments uh in larger. Master plan developments in Williston and and Essex. Uh so we we do we do have a little bit of uh walking around experience from that in those two or three projects. I will say, one of my takeaways from that field trip was that um Heinsberg's vision. And part of what we're actualizing with the Heinsberg Center project where Kenny Drugs is located and Bristol Bakery. Um is is a level of mixed use that that I didn't see as much of in those projects, especially the Williston example where. You know, that project had Finney Crossing and the Hamlets had non-residential sprinkled around the edges and once you pierce that outer veil. It was just a sea of residential, all large, you know, uh townhouses and large apartments.
Tight, yeah, tight houses.
Yeah.
But I think what's different there is they got made from tree, I mean, they have.
They're they're surrounded by.
Surrounded.
Commercial, yeah, that's a good point, and we don't, we are, everything's happening in one place in Heinsberg.
They're surrounded by it, but it's it's like non-walkable.
At your own peril.
I all I'm saying is that I think it um it it will be challenging in Heinsberg to to get the development the way we want it. Um because it it those mixed-use projects are are difficult, uh they're they're more difficult to finance, uh. And they require a greater level of creativity and um so it's just something to keep in mind. Interestingly, you know, uh one of our developers in town didn't think that that would work. And then built it, and it did work, and that's the that's Heinsberg Center, you know, the original conversations about that. Second area of development after the the residential neighborhood was built was, well, I've got a Kenny Drugs that's interested and. I I can't do multi-story buildings that are mixed-use because it just doesn't work. And then it turned out the market supported it and he built it out that way, so.
So we we talked about multi-story commercial, I guess I didn't bring it up at that point, but I mean, that's example, people have employed it, it has worked.
Yeah, yeah.
Any nibbles on Quinn yet?
Yeah, nibbles, just nibbles.
It would be awesome to get this done before.
I I think it would be good to get this done, you know, towards the end of this year for all of those projects, they're they're all basically gonna be stuck. You know, or beyond, we just don't have water and we won't for a couple of years at best. Uh so I think what you're doing with this will affect all of those projects, none none of them have vested in the current regs, um so it's important for.
Except Heinsberg Village.
The center.
Heinsberg Center?
Yeah, whatever.
Do I get confused?
Hmm, no, he hasn't vested yet either. So his project was denied at preliminary for lack of water.
Yeah.
Came back with a revision, got approved at sketch and is now stuck, just like the other two, because he needs, the the DRB said. The DRB said, you have to have water to come back for preliminary and we just don't have it.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, this was really good.
Yeah.
It was a really good discussion tonight.
I will do my best to find some more pictures and density examples, I think the visuals are the key to understanding it, like you said, John, uh.
It it speaks to me, I mean.
Yeah.
And this is something you want to bring in at the next meeting?
Yeah, I figured you'd wanna just keep keep talking about it and get it as close to get get as close to the boundaries around it as you can and then. You know, you dump it to me or maybe maybe two or three of us could work on it, uh the same way that Jeff and I are trying to work with the Village Student Committee on design stuff. Something like that.
Yeah, unfortunately for me, I won't be here next meeting, I'll be on vacation, so. And that's already planned and.
Great, we'll we'll close a bunch of stuff wrong.
Johnny will get her done.
Well, I mean, I I I trust everybody else, this isn't this isn't uh just what I think should happen.
When somebody says that, they really don't.
No, no, all all of you can make good decisions.
All right, um let us move on.
Thanks for putting this together.
All right, I think next-gen item was on lighting?
Right, so I was supposed to be delivering you the entire set of housekeeping changes, you know, ten years' worth of zoning changes that are little and need to be made. But I really want Mitch to review those and and be a second pair of eyes, um and we're doing that tomorrow and the next day, so. So I just plucked out one, this is the one that I spent the most time on because whereas many of the housekeeping changes are like, change this sentence a little bit or modify this word or add something here. This was like, in my mind, um take a regulation for outdoor lighting that just says uh light what you need to light and don't. Don't trespass too much on outside of, you know, other people's properties to um. A a more robust and specific set of regs the way other up-and-coming communities have.
So are those other little tiny housekeeping things coming back?
They are, yes, Mitch and I are.
Also?
That's my hope, is to have those, have at least a batch of them, I don't think you're gonna be able to do, walk through them all in one meeting, but to have a batch of them for next meeting.
So I I read through outdoor lighting, I I thought it was a lot more definitive and helpful, um. I only found like one place where I didn't totally understand the sentence, and that's my.
Well, I am happy to answer questions and take feedback on how to. Make it better or and or if you're you look at it and you're like, Alex, you added two pages to the regs, that's not a good thing, you know, I I can hear that feedback too.
Well, I I just don't know what it means by full cutoff fixtures.
Good question, um so. I guess one of the things that's not in here that I had intended to be in here, I'm not sure where.
I found a diagram online, did you?
Yeah, I was supposed to put a diagram in here that does that, but to be to be just easy about it. A full cutoff fixture is one where the light source cannot go above um horizontal. So imagine a light bulb like this, right, um or a fixture like this. If my bulb is sitting up inside the fixture, it can't it can't escape out beyond horizontal. If if as you see on a lot of light fixtures, the bulb is hanging down, then imagine the light, it can go in every direction, including up to the sky and and that. So a full cutoff fixture cuts off the light at the plane of the horizontal and nothing escapes above that.
You don't have a lollipop on top of a stick that's all alight, which in the seventies.
Right, or a streetlight that looks like a.
Streetlight, looks like an old-timey streetlight.
Hanging down, yeah.
This this is Heinsberg, not Candyland.
Right, right. In this five twenty-nine-one, which sort of laps over between page one oh seven and one oh eight, uh. It's subject to the development review project that existing. Non-conforming uh projects. If if they are being changed for some other reason, it's it's at the discretion of the DRB to. Uh require the existing lighting to also meet these standards.
That's the way it's worded, yes.
Right, okay, I just wanna understand that because I think it shouldn't be at the discretion of the DRB, I think it should be required. That if the 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 project is changing for other reasons.
And there's a there's a balance, right, I mean, to keep to keep storefronts full. And let's let's say, um I mean, I I don't have the answer to this, but I'll I'll throw a throw an example out, so. Which which happens a lot, so um a plaza and they have an empty storefront. And when the use changes, they're required to come in and and, you know, pitch that that new use. This could be changing from, I don't know, restaurant type A to, you know, I don't know, service establishment or something like that. And they got a parking lot, right, with with older streetlights. So um does the does the change of use in that space, right, existing storefront? Really, it's just a different business that's going in, right, does that invoke the light change? Because if it does, right, there's a there's a huge cost we're we're putting on.
There is a cost, hu- maybe huge, maybe not huge, how big is huge? I I think it should be required. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
So to clarify, what what happens in this first section where it talks about lighting that's uh that's excluded from the standards? The first thing listed is up to four lights per lot. Each with an initial output no higher than twelve hundred lumens, so if a business, for example, came in and said, hey, we wanna. You know, add a couple parking spaces, they're kicked into site plan review and they're gonna put in some extra, an extra light to illuminate those spaces. Um and they have several other non-compliant lights, if if they have no more than four, um then and they're not. They're not over twelve hundred lumens, th- they're okay, they don't have to upgrade those lights anyways because we're allowing a certain amount of of. Um non-shielded, non-cutoff, low-lumen lights. But beyond that example, then yes, you get into this push and pull of of uh do you just make everyone come up to a good standard or do you let some stuff go or do you make it discretionary? In terms of existing lights.
Give the DRB a clear statement? Or do we leave it in their laps to once again have to decide? Rather than giving them clear direction, uh or passing passing the decision on to them.
The the example from other regulations we've done, like when we did stormwater, right, and we talked about. The village area where there's, you know, um really limited opportunity for onsite stormwater because of lot size and coverage and all those things. At the same time, we we did put in some requirements, right, and the amount of requirement was based on. Really, the amount of change, right, for small changes, we expected small incremental improvement, for larger changes, we expected more. Um I kinda I kinda liken that here, I mean, um if it was just a a change of business and nothing else changed other than the name on a sign. Right, I I think I think that's that's a minimal, right, part the parking hasn't changed, right, this the the lighting on the sign hasn't changed, it's just a business, they come in because. They had business A and now they have business B. Um I think I think the DRB still hears those kinda. Um requests from time to time. Um if they're reformatting the parking lot, right, changing the entrance and exit, you know, wanna put in new signage for business advertisement. Things like that, that's a more major change, right, and it affects, it really does affect the the outward aesthetic and. You know, I would ask for more there.
Well, we could, uh with that in mind, we could try to address John's concern by by adding more words uh along the lines where you said, Joe. You know, to differentiate between minor site plan revisions and uh revisions, more major ones that involve um. Uh building renovation or site work, uh that sort of thing.
Do you remember Dennis Ralph, it's seems like frequently the board will tell applicants who have non-compliant lighting just to. Update it or shield it anyway, um but I don't know that we have a cut and dry rule on that. Do you remember what happened with Newton recently? I think maybe that one, I don't know that they had any lighting, actually.
I don't think so.
Mentioned it.
So.
No, I don't remember being.
You know, I don't I don't know whether this.
I don't know if they had any lighting.
I don't think they did, yeah.
I don't know whether this, my example gives enough of a a picture of what change might involve, but. For example, up in um the old Esti Plaza, right now, there's uh. Travis Hart and his wife have a business right adjacent to um the the little sandwich shop. And let's say Travis uh relocates to another facility. And all of a sudden, the space next to the sandwich shop is available, sandwich shop wants to expand and become more of a sit-down restaurant. Open longer hours and so forth, I would think that that would impact the signage, the entrance, the parking requirements. And so forth for that development.
Sort of, the um that project is.
I mean, they could should.
Because there's an overall site plan approval for the entire property, all of the development, all the businesses in there. And as businesses blink in and out of existence in there, uh they just need to conform with the overall approval. They don't have to revise it each time a business changes hands.
But the the parking requirements, for example, for Travis's business as opposed to an expanded. Food business that now has tables, sit-down, longer hours.
We would look at it in terms of the overall site plan approval, yes.
What the parking capacity.
Yeah.
Parking demand is and whether that capacity is there already or.
Right.
Does it need to be changed and.
Again, is it is it a minor or is it a major?
Maybe we can indicate some of the things that might move it from being a minor application to being a major application. Give an example, I was just reading about the the Supreme Court decision uh or lack of decision on the travel bans. And they actually gave some examples in their decision as to what they meant, whether someone had a connection to the United States already. Uh if the Supreme Court can give examples in their decisions, uh it seems to me that we could build examples in to our regulations.
Oh, sure, yeah.
That would help the DRB decide, is this a minor or is this a major, or help you decide when you. Your office brings the project to the DRB.
It would absolutely be clear if it just said, you either have to do it or you don't.
Right.
And there wasn't a discretionary piece to it at all.
But Joe has a a position, I think, that says that's not always obvious that it should, you know, if it's a simple change, why should we make the. All the lighting have to change, that is a big expense compared to what the actual change in business is.
To the lighting itself, what what if you said if the lighting of the site is changing? Then any non-compliant existing lighting needs to be changed along with it. And if you're not, if you're not changing. And if you're not, if you're not changing the lighting, if you're changing a sign or you're changing a parking striping or something like that. And existing lighting is sufficient and won't be changing, then then you don't, could you could you do it that way?
The the other question I had was, it says up to four lights per lot, doesn't say how big a lot. What if it's a small lot, what if it's a big lot? Seems to me lot size is implied here also.
Well, it's not.
But not defined, it's just per lot.
Right, or per building with residential use, for those lots that have multiple buildings on them. I'm thinking of Heinsburg Center, there's a lot that has three residential buildings.
Right.
Each probably wants to have, you know, a light out front and a light out back and. But no, that that the way it's worded was intentional to to say, it's gonna be a limited number of unshielded, non-compliant lights. And they have to be low, you know, not very bright, and so that's how it, yeah. I mean, they could, we can change that, but that's that was worded that way intentionally, not not to have it be, if you have a large lot, you can add twelve lights. And if you have a small light, a lot, you can only add two.
I mean, the other the other way to approach this, right, I mean, for for pre-existing stuff is, I mean, sooner or later, everything is a lifetime. Or so maybe this is something that that needs to be, you know, embodied, but, you know, all light fixtures have a lifetime. They don't last, they don't last forever, so, you know.
If you're changing them.
If you wanna if you wanna sunset things, if the thing breaks, then it needs to, you know, it needs to be replaced, you know, then you wanna you wanna replace with. I don't know how that goes in the regulations, 'cause it doesn't see the board.
Very difficult to enforce something like that, you know, uh, 'cause we just don't know when they're gonna replace a light fixture and. Some of them do last an awful long, an awful long time.
Right, but they don't last forever.
Longer longer than they maybe should.
Yeah, that's my feeling, is that the fixture on the front of this building, for example, under the porch, oughta be replaced. But the last time the bulb went, it just, you know, a bulb was acquired and that was, maybe some electronics needed to be tweaked. And it was, it's back up and running, but I would love to see lights like that go away. Or get replaced with something that wasn't so shine in your face as you drive by on the road. And that's us, that's our light, that's the town.
Right. Well, maybe you can find some language to suggest to us about the issues we just talked about on that on that one item.
Okay, assuming everybody's good with that.
If other people think it's worth pursuing. I also had an issue about the the. The downcast lighting on the top of flagpoles is encouraged, why can't it be required?
Yeah, where's the.
Where is there lighting on a flagpole in this town, it, can you think of one?
No, but.
Veterans, the Veterans Park has lights on the ground that shine up.
Oh, okay, I see.
They do very little, because I think they're they're solar lights and they have, you you they don't cast much light at all.
They don't, no.
But I think the intention was at some point to replace those with something that actually does light the flag. But we don't have, you're right, we don't have anywhere there's actual light on top of the flag, where is that, John?
It's there.
Number three, under five twenty-nine-one. Yeah, page one oh.
Oh, so, yeah, what this is saying is that lighting of flags on flagpoles is excluded from this ornament, from this section. You you don't need those lights to comply with all of these other provisions, 'cause it would be nearly impossible to do so. So, basically, what it's saying is, you don't have to worry about this section of the regs if you're lighting a flag. But hey, by the way, we'd love to have you do it from the top, if you if you could.
Yeah, but you're saying it's already done, you're already doing it. If if you're, if if it's already there, you're fine. But then we say, in this section, which is supposed to be talking about, was already there. We say, downcast lighting from the top of the pole is encouraged.
Oh.
Sounds to me like.
So you're missing, I'm sorry, this you're misinterpreting the way this is written, or I didn't write it very well. Maybe 'cause it's mixing two things. This this idea about non-existing, non-conforming lights having to come into compliance at the discretion of the DRB. Has nothing to do with the next sentence that then leads up to these eight items. Which says, lighting excluded from the standards includes, that means new lighting, any lighting.
It doesn't read that way.
Okay, so I can I can fix that.
If you're talking about existing lighting.
Yeah, so I can fix that, but that's the way I it was meant to be read, was that.
Projects, however. Well, that, the word however, I guess, is.
Well, it's easy to fix that, just.
Is indicating, just make it another section.
Starting a new paragraph would would make it pretty, would make it a lot clearer.
Jumps out more.
So if you want flags to have downcast lighting, then, you know, I can make that change. But what, how it reads now is that it's.
Flags which aren't in town. Yes, then I would say, yes, the the lighting should be above the flags on the top of the pole.
Okay.
You're saying that this is applying to things which are not here, right?
Yes.
The parentheses, one, two, three, four, five, all the way down to eight, none of that exists.
It actually, it applies to all lighting, existing or other or new. It's 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 telling you what lighting is excluded from the standards in this section, whether it's existing lighting.
Or new lighting.
These lights are exempt from the standards of the section, that's that.
So lighting of flagpoles is exempt.
Right. You don't have to read on and say, oh, I need a full cutoff fixture, I need to have color rendition, I need temperature of a certain type, I need, you know, installation height. All those things you don't have to worry about for lighting a flag, the way this is written.
Okay.
So if you want flags to be treated such that lighting has to be downcast from the top. Then I'll just take it out of this exclusionary section and stick it into the rest of the section somewhere else and say, flagpoles are special. And they have to have downcast.
Well, I I don't think that's the the preference of the committee, of the commission, I I think.
It doesn't seem to be a serious problem in town, yeah, but it might be, who knows?
Fourth of July's coming up, you never know, those crazy people.
My understanding, and I'm not a, I'm not a veterans expert. But my understanding is, if you have a flag and it and it's and you don't take it down at dark, it's supposed to be lit, there's some convention about that.
Right, there's a military rule.
Yeah, I don't I don't know where that statute is, I don't think it is a statute, I think it's sort of a, that's, you know, conventional practice, but.
But getting a light on the top of a flagpole, downcast, happening in Heinsburg, Vermont.
That was my point.
Sometimes I just reinforce what others say.
That's great, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I can hear my own.
Really minor, Alex, but first section under five two-nine. Sentence towards the bottom of the paragraph says, and reduce energy used used by direct outdoor lighting in reasonable levels? Or at reasonable levels, or?
Oh, this is in the purpose statement?
Yeah.
These provisions are intended to reduce energy use by directing outdoor lighting in reasonable levels. Only where it is needed and through the use of energy-efficient lighting.
The end the end threw me, the first thought, a couple times when I read it, but.
It's a run-on sentence, you want me to clean it up a little?
Clean it up.
Okay. I'm sure I stole that from some other municipality, so.
Blame them, then.
I am blaming them, but I'll make it better, thank you for, thank you for catching that.
Jumped off a bridge.
I wanted to, I mean, I I am not a a good scientist. But like in five nine, five two-nine-two, number three and four. You know, where we use the word relatively uniform lighting levels, relatively natural color rendition. And then when you go to the other side on page one oh nine and it says. Requirements for a photometric plan and then access walkways. It says maximum illumination six-foot candles, maximum average illumination one point five-foot candles. That doesn't sound to me like reasonable or relatively uniform lighting levels. I guess what is a relatively uniform lighting level, you know?
My question, but where where do these level recommendations or requirements that you have in here, where did those come from? And the color rendition and the color temperature, where do where do those standards come from?
Okay, so, one question at a time.
Sorry.
So, the word relatively is there principally because if all it says is uniform lighting levels, it could be construed to mean. Everything is the same lighting across the entire site. So relatively is a modifier that says, doesn't have to be completely uniform, but it has to generally be uniform. We don't wanna have dark spots and bright spots. But then it says, see below for specific standards for larger projects. So for larger projects, we have we have much more definition with the maximums, the averages and and so on. For smaller projects that don't don't fall into that, they're getting that.
Yeah.
That relatively uniform, which I agree is not with, you know, that's not pinpoint accuracy. But anyways, that was the rationale, I'm happy to reword it, you know.
No, I was just I was raising it, that's all.
But that's where the relatively comes from, and then it, you know, we point to another section where bigger projects have some real specific bounds. As to John's question about where did all of these come from, it comes from two things. An exhaustive literature search. A another exhaustive reading of all of our surrounding communities that have actually done this work. Several of them have done a good job of getting on top of outdoor lighting ahead of us. And and they have differing, you know, maxims, maximums and minimums. And then into that stew, I added what what the actual lighting levels are for some of our more recent projects. Like what was proposed for Hannaford, what the what the Jiffy Mart gas station had for a lighting plan. What the Heinsburg Family Health had for a lighting plan and what the Kenny Drugs project had for lighting levels. 'Cause those projects all had foot candle maps that, you know, were.
A photometric chart.
Yeah, photometric chart.
Police station had.
Police station did as well, and so I looked at what other communities had, as well as what the literature recommended. And then I looked at what our actual projects had and tried to, you know, blend those. So it's not one, it's not the other, it's sort of a, it's a blend of those. I found that some of the recommendations in the literature were for lower lighting levels than some of these projects had. And yet, I don't know about you, I find that the Kenny Drugs project, the police station, even the Jiffy Mart have. Adequate and not obtrusive lighting levels that that I think we could replicate and be satisfied with. Even though they might be slightly more on some of these stats than what, you know, the literature suggests.
It seemed to me there are also, when you go through on a large project, the state's review. When you get into.
They don't drill down into, um.
They make reference to lighting standards that are suggested by the international.
Well, that's true.
You know, the IIE.
Yeah, there's the International Dark Sky Association and there's.
I'm thinking of the the electrical, not contractors, but the engineers.
Yep.
Who do lighting have standards that they refer to all over the country. And they're a national standard, like our building code is built on a national code.
So I looked at those and none of those, in my estimation, none of those are a perfect fit for all situations. And some of them, again, just my estimation. Lead to way more lighting than than's actually necessary to make a site work. And that was some of the discussion we had with Hannaford, actually, when they came in with their lighting plan and had done, you know, all of the industry standards. For supermarkets and all of those things, and we said, you know what, that that's that's great, but that's way too much lighting, you know? Bring it down a notch, and they did, and the and the and the photometric charts seemed to work in terms of having a minimal amount of lighting in certain places. So, there's there's a there's a blended stew that that is the creation of these numbers.
So you can't point to a particular standard.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to point to, point you in the direction of the standards I looked at to come up with the blended stew. But I can't give you a formula that said, I took the IIE, multiplied it by two and divided by this to get that number.
And what you're saying is, you don't wanna point to one of those standards, because that in fact allows higher lighting levels. Than what we're experiencing already and that what we prefer.
In some cases, in some cases, I think a lot of the Dark Sky Association lighting level recommendations actually result in less lighting. Than these sites that we have real experience with that are fine, in my in my estimation. So it it was a little bit of both, you know, bringing the lighting allowances up in some cases and also bringing them down in other cases. Banks, for example, the industry standards for lighting ATMs and and outdoor sort of banking areas are huge. Very, you know, bright light of day kind of thing, and we dealt with that with the National Bank a little bit. When they came in and tried to reach some sort of middle ground, based on what we felt was reasonable and what they felt, you know, their industry standard was.
Is it is it useful, or have you seen it, Alex, where a community, I mean, this is sort of like a. In terms of the general lay public and even most development review boards. The knowledge about some of the technical issues, you know, what's a foot candle, what's a lumen? And even these examples that you're citing, you know, as reference, do you think they could potentially help? The comprehension of this kind of information, if you made reference to them? Or is that something that happens on a more informal level already?
No, I think that it would be, it'll be important to make sure that the definitions sections of the of the zoning document include definitions of these terms. Foot candle in particular.
But examples not necessary.
I don't, I don't think so, I mean, I I found, I did a lot of online research and there's and and I can point you in direction of some documents. That actually have visual examples of one illumination pattern versus, I found those to be helpful. I I don't see a a development review board, you know, going down that path on every development. I have a feeling that if the regs have specific numbers, a development review board's gonna look at a project person and say, show me your plan. And does it meet these numbers, and if it does, we're we're done. But it's, it might be an interesting training for your board at some point to to bring a lighting expert in. And to talk about what these things all mean and, you know, show some examples. Especially if this gets adopted, probably we we really should do that, so at least once, you've gotten your hands around it.
I got another one, five twenty-nine-two, item six, installation height. No higher than twenty feet, the fixtures, the new fixtures that are the high ones along one sixteen in front of Kenny. And Bristol Bakery, how high are those, do you recall?
I don't, I have that lighting plan, I don't have it here with me tonight.
The ones along the road closest to one sixteen, to me, seem needlessly tall. Needlessly high, and I'm, I mean, Bristol Bakery, you've got apartments above. And the lights are up at the level of the apartment windows. It it seems to me that we wanna be sure that twenty feet is the maximum, that we don't wanna make that sixteen feet or twelve feet. I also think about the trees that would eventually grow up to be along that front area. And will the lights be above those trees and not in fact light the sidewalks adequately?
Yeah, I will tell you that based on what other communities in the county are do and and some of the industry standards. That, you know, a twelve-foot lighting maximum is, would be would be unusual, unusually low. Especially in parking lot situations, light fixtures are typically up higher than that. In order to not have to have lots more light fixtures out there in the first place. But there's a balance, I mean, certainly it would be easier if the lighting height was allowed to be forty feet. And you just put one big pole and. And then you just put one big pole and shut, you know, but obviously we don't want that either, so there, there is a balance there. Um, I can't tell you that twenty's the right number, I can tell you that that's, um, typical. And not on the high side. But again, I'm happy to show you, you know, some of the other community regs that, that I was referencing. And, and some of the industry related mumbo jumbo, if you'd like, to, to get a feel for what that, what those ranges are.
For example, right in that same section, building mounted lights shall be no higher than fifteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
Why is twenty feet on a pole okay, but fifteen feet is the limit on the building?
So there's a good reason for that, and that is that when you have a building mounted light, it's not illuminating a three hundred and sixty degree area, right? It's necessarily, um, illuminating an area near the building. And because we, we don't want lights that, like the one on the front of this building, that shine out, but would, you know, but in fact shine down.
Right.
Those building mounted lights have a real limited area of, of, uh, influence and illumination. Um, so. You don't need them to be as tall to do what they're going to be able to do, whereas a light fixture in the middle of a parking lot. Mounted at a higher height is gonna be able to illuminate a much larger area, so you get much more bang for your buck. Um, on the pole mounted lights and that's why having, you know, having it be as tall as you can possibly stomach is better. Cause you have, you don't require as many lights that way, less energy waste, um. More areas that you can plant trees and not have conflicts with lights, all that kinda stuff. It's a balance, but that's the, that's the rationale for the different.
I can understand in the parking lot, particularly the large parking lots for.
Yeah.
Even the, even the.
Obershans Plaza or, um, what have you.
Or, exactly. Uh, but along, along the road, particularly where we're talking about, uh, parking right next to the building. Uh, where you're gonna go shop, uh, and we're talking about a, a walking environment. Why we have to have a pole as high as would be in a parking lot. Uh, it's lighting the street where the cars are driving.
Yep.
When it's on a twenty foot pole. When really what we're trying to light is that area right where the cars park and get out. Someone walks on the sidewalk and goes into a store, so the location makes a difference.
Do you remember what the, wh- I don't, do you remember what the height was on the police station, um, pole mounted lights that went in?
And I meant to get my tape and go over and try to estimate how tall those lights are.
It should be on the plan, we can, we can look at that together if you wanna stop by sometime.
All those heights should be on, on, both for the Kenny Drug Development and the Police Station, uh.
Well, drop by sometime, John, cause I think it would be helpful to look at what the actual heights are, cause, uh, maybe twenty's too tall, but then again, maybe it's.
There are different heights, pole mounted lights as part of that Kenny development.
Oh, yeah.
There are different heights.
Yes, absolutely.
And the ones closest to one sixteen are the highest, are the tallest.
Yep.
Uh, so we have allowed different heights to occur and developers have put in different heights.
Right, all this seeks to do is.
Depending on the application.
All this seeks to do is cap the maximum, it doesn't seek to be more nuanced than that. Only so that we don't get, you know, the thirty foot mounted pole light.
Hey, other comments?
I never noticed that.
I do, I notice that kinda stuff, I look at pole lights all the time.
Alright, shall we move on to minutes?
All I can say is I don't know how Dawn manages to pull together what she does from everything that's discussed. You're a wonderful listener.
Thank you.
I move we approve the minutes.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, the minutes are approved. Alex, new business?
No, just like, uh, we were talking before, I think at your next meeting, my hope is we can continue the density conversation, start on the housekeeping changes. Other announcements, I don't think I have any.
Okay.
Anybody else get recent mail or?
Um, yesterday was Alex's birthday and today is Jeff's.
Alright.
Happy birthday, Alex.
Happy birthday, Alex.
I'm sorry if I didn't know.
I wasn't here yesterday, but I'm here today, yes.
Good.
I, I did a very close inspection of the Village Center of Weston, so. Bringing you information about how we can have a playhouse and, uh, Vermont Country Store and other things. It's, it's beautiful, huh?
I owe you dessert.
I turned forty-six yesterday.
Just a kid.
It all depends which group you're talking to.
That's right.
But I did feel like a kid at the Weston Playhouse last night.
Yeah.
What was the show?
Uh, it was a musical called Once, it was on Broadway, they made a movie out of it a while back. It's a.
A nice movie.
A story about two musicians meeting in Ireland.
Street, Ruskin.
Yep, it was fun.
Cool.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks everybody.